I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have, I have a PowerPoint to show you first, so that you know what you're proving. Welcome to virtual budget option session. Our budgetary assumptions for this year and our revenues, we're looking at, at this point, a 4.41% decrease in state aid or a loss of $545,000. That is due anticipated loss of transportation aid for the, as it is a re-aid with the buses down in transportation. That's the amount of state aid and projection we're going to lose. So, we're looking, I'm looking to ask you to increase the appropriated fund balance, which is the monies left over from this year's budget, and I'm looking to increase that to reduce taxes. But to the budget, I want to increase the $134,201. I'm looking to ask you to approve for the budget process a 2% property tax levy increase. So expenditures are 3.23% budgeted. It's a million, thousand, one, four. So, we have our, oh, sorry. Our general support, the generous support. The business, the business, the rounds, the insurance, legal costs, and some three funds. So those are, we go 3,696,853,853 dollars to 4,995,642,073 dollars. Instructional, which I think doesn't really need a descriptor, is to go 15,742,007,600,0811 dollars or $591,000, $4 dollar increase. From 2,180,980 dollars to 2,345,000, increase of 122,455 dollars. Employee benefits, service, civic activities, and fund transfers are expected to go from 9,732,900,000 now to 9,627,483 dollars. Debt reduction is possible based on two factors. Our Cogent plant was 15 years old this year, and so we no longer owe any mortgage or debt service payments on it. So that went down, and we were able to rebid this fall and come up with the $400,000 savings for the taxpayers in the health insurance cost for the district. So our total expenditures are going to go from, are projected in this presentation, if you just choose to adapt, 31,353,121 dollars to 32,364,315 dollars or $191,94, a 3.23% increase. Any questions so far? Yeah. Year to year revenues.
Laura, can you back up? To the screen where you talked about budgetary assumptions? Back one more maybe. This one, the second bullet, no, you had it just a minute ago. That one, can, can you just explain a little bit more about, about the, the buses that you talked about for a moment? You talked about losing money?
Yes, every year, as part of our state package, we receive 72% of the cost of running our buses in state aid from New York State. What happened to be the money in 1912, but mid state, they've put some actual costs. So because we're not doing the transportation and our mileage is going to be down 25%. I factored that we lose 5,003 dollars of state aid because we did not spend enough or nor have enough miles on our buses.
Everybody understand what she just said because she was coming in and out? Okay. Thank you, Laura.
We're having a reduction in state aid for transportation because we're not putting our miles on the buses anymore, correct? That's basically it in a nutshell?
Yep, that's it, because it's an expense-driven aid that you didn't expend.
Okay.
So Laura and Sandy, when do we normally buy buses?
So you'll have, I'll let Laura talk about it, but you put a proposition on for the, for the voters to approve now. This would be no different this year. So Laura, do you want to talk about that proposition? Did we lose Laura?
She's still registered in the, in the meeting, but I think we, I think she fell off with her internet.
So, so you'll have a proposition on the board agenda this year to utilize the bus reserve to purchase the buses. So it's a zero implication to the taxpayers and it's utilizing the reserve that you have.
Right.
And then it takes all summer for those buses to come in at the specs that we asked them for.
Okay, so if we buy them, so we will actually probably place a purchase order like July 1st for them. And, you know, when they come in, they come in then.
You can, you can play, as soon as the, the voters authorize, you're able to do it. That's why knowing when the board date was, was so important to us.
Lucinda?
There, she's back.
I can't get the screen back though, it says that someone else has it.
So, it might be easier Laura, if you let Lucinda share that screen so that, so that maybe your voice will be a little bit easier too.
Yes, but if she does it, then she doesn't know when to move.
I don't have the budget. I don't remember where she is. Now Laura's connection is just super choppy.
We're hearing about every third word.
Yeah, it's very challenging.
Is this anybody? So, hang on, can I, I'm going to zoom out, I'm going to log out and try to use my phone and see if I can get better.
So this is, this is actually a really good example of what is happening to parents that we have in our district that have connectivity issues. I don't think that we should forget that what we're seeing happen is happening on a daily basis, not to the majority of our parents, but to many of them. And New York State has connectivity issues. A good example of what we see happening.
So we will try again, so we go back, do we want to go forward now?
Yep, you're good Laura, you can go forward, make every third word important though.
Well, I'm hoping that my cellphone maybe has better reception than my. So our year-to-year expenditures are going to go $1,011,194 or 3.23% if this budget is adopted. So, when we fund the expenditures, we must again have matching revenues. So again, I'm going to ask this board to adopt a 2% levy increase or 297,884. I am acknowledging that my state is going down $45,333 to $11,819,208. My federal aid is going to remain stable at 30,000. My Mr. Lee is going down. My Mr. Lee has my yearly sales tax revenue, so 319,204 dollars decrease. We're estimating about 20% loss. My, my inner front transfers will remain stable as we bring some money in from other funds that we have to help support the budget. Appropriate fund balance, I'm hoping you're all hearing me because I don't want you to just hear every word. Last year, we used money left over for prior year in the amount of 729,560 dollars in order to reduce taxing on the levy. I am asking the Board of Education to approve appropriating an additional 1,104,000 dollars left over from the 1920 school year, an increase of 100. We lost you.
All right, so let me kind of take it from here, I guess. Because I kind of have an idea what's going on. So, so last year we used one point, I'm not going down to the pennies like Laura does, I'm just going to say we used 1.9 million in reserves. This year, we're going to, to get this budget balanced, it's going to be 3.5 million to balance the budget. And I can't remember where I heard it today, but for all intensive purposes, this is a stopgap budget. You know, until, until things work their, work their way out and work their way through this process to really understand what we're going to be looking like in September. We're just using reserves to get through the budget process right now, because no one really knows what September is going to look like right now. It, it, it could look nothing like we're even used to, so. And the budget could all be blown up by then anyways, in my opinion.
Well, the real.
She's back.
Yep, the reality of the situation is, in these unprecedented times, Governor Cuomo has the authority, the legal authority, with the legislator having 10 days to approve three times throughout the fiscal year to cut any revenue, any state aid expenditures that he needs to. So we don't know where we go once this budget is adopted. We will know, April 30th was his first date, I still don't have numbers, June 30th is the second, and December 31st is the third. So, it's really uncharted waters for all districts throughout New York State. And Don, thank you very much for lifting the load when my internet died.
No problem.
And even, so even if December, whatever is his last day, there's nothing saying he wouldn't re-up the whole process starting. Do you know what I'm saying, like looking at it again three times in a fiscal year? Just because the year ends doesn't mean you won't do it all over again.
The only reason, and then we go to December, my belief is because their new year starts March 31st, the following week. And they're only talking one year in their budget process, which is where that was given.
Right, but the following budget process year, he could start the whole.
Still be in our fiscal year till June.
Right.
And yes, you're right, he could continue doing it, depending on how things go with this.
And if he makes more cuts, they have to come out of our reserves at that point?
Well, if he makes more cuts, I can only spend, if this budget is adapted by the board and it's approved by the voters, I can only spend 32,364,315 dollars. If there's cuts to be made, those will have to be made throughout the year. If there's no revenue to fund it, or the board will have to tell me that we will need to use fund balance to close the gaps. And then we will see what the legal authority is throughout the year to the board. I still don't have a clear answer on that from Laura yet.
So, one of the conversations that Laura and I started having, and what we have done in the past is to take a look at how far forward we actually need to approve anything. So, a couple of years ago, we, we did not approve our spring extracurricular activities until closer to that date. We need to take a look at everything that we have that comes forward on November, December, and onward to see what we can hold off on as we get a better idea of what this school year may look like in three-month increments. And, and I agree with everything that Mr. Suckin just said, because we honestly, at this point, do not have any idea what September will look like. It could look like it does right now, it could look like some type of blended. What, what we can be certain of is that we will be cleaning and sanitizing more than ever before. And that we need to pay attention in so many ways about square footage when it comes to social distancing, even in the fall.
Were you ready to try and move forward?
Yeah, you sound good, go now.
Of course, because my PowerPoint won't move. There we go. So, the proposed budget that I'm going to ask this Board of Education to adapt tonight is 32,364,315 dollars, both for revenues and expenditures, and our budget gap is now closed. So, I wanted to be able to show everyone what is the 10-year district true value tax rate. Because the tax rate varies, as you can see, back in 1011, the total true value of all the assessments in the district was 681 million, and in 1920, of August of 1920, it was 831 million. I do not know what the true value will be until August 1st of 2020. So that's why our average tax rate per thousand fluctuates and does not, very rarely if ever, agree with the proposed projections that I give at this time of year. Few years ago, Senator Galvin tried to get legislation passed to change that so that the taxes would be based on the prior year's assessment, but he was unsuccessful. So if you can see, we are now less tax rate per thousand than we were in 2010, 11, as of the 1920 school year.
So Laura, just because it's hard to hear you, Don, could you just do your magic and restate that?
Yeah, so, so basically, if you look 10 years back, the average household per thousand dollars assessed value, you're paying $18.12 per thousand. You can see where we had the peak through the, the mid 20 teens, and then it's, it's been on a decline here the last two years. And last year, we finished at 17.92 per, per thousand. Not knowing what the, the true value of the town of Edens, or the, the School of Edens tax role, we should be, my estimate is, is about $18.20 per, per true value, and it's just an estimate on that, so. It's, you know, we've really held, no, there you go. She's thinking it's $18.27, so. So basically, it's, it's $35 per $100,000 home.
And that average cost per week would be 67 cents. It is within the tax cap calculation, it's below the maximum that this Board of Education can raise and requires a simple majority of 50% plus one voter approval. And this is the remaining schedule. And if I cut out, I would appreciate if someone else reads it, because I think it's important, because things are so different than they've ever been. So, May 11th is, go ahead Sandy.
Yeah, let me read it Laura, because it really is difficult to hear you. So, this is, this is the executive order backing up on deadlines that we know from the last executive order of the governor. I'm going to start at the bottom. If the ballots have to be received by the district clerk on June 9th, then all other dates above that are filled in from that bottom, that bottom date. So coming back up to the top, that means by May 11th, which as you know, is coming up very fast, candidates need to file their nominations. Barb, do you want to jump in here on how people would do that? Did we lose Barb? So, just in case we lost Barb, this is different than it would normally have been in the past, where people would have had to have had signatures and petitions. So what I would suggest is that if in fact people are interested in running, which would include our incumbent board members, that you just simply email or give Barbara calls so that she can walk you through that process, but May 11th is the deadline. If you have not done so already, and there, there are details that need to be followed. May 18th is the ballot mailing to the residents who are currently working right now. I'm trying to figure out how and who to mail these ballots to. It looks to me that it may cost as close to $2 apiece, but those numbers are solid, just based on a few other things that we're learning along the way. We do have a webinar tomorrow that may help us understand it a little bit more. This is to.
Can I just, I did, my last interaction with Mitch Martin was that he was waiting on clarity from their legislative director on the issue. Nobody seems to know. And I mean this respectfully, because I know things are chaos right now, but nobody really seemed to know what was going on.
So, so what I can tell you is, is that there's a distinct difference between registered voters and eligible voters. And we believe right now that there are 8,600 eligible voters in Eden who were responsible for mailing ballots to. We know who our registered voters are, Board of Elections can help us with our registered voters, it's the eligible voters that, that we're trying to work through. The budget, the budget report card then from Laura is due to New York State after the board approves a budget, which would be May 21st. We've decided to move our budget hearing up to May 26th, though we could go as far as June 2nd. We believe it's important for us to have a budget hearing before people decide to mail their ballots back so that Barb also has the time to work on the minutes from that meeting. And so that our residents can view them on our website. Also, on May 26th is the deadline for residents to receive their ballots, we'll be doing it via US mail. And on June 3rd, on Laura.
Yes?
Tell me about June 3rd.
That's another deadline, that's the latest we could do our budget notice mailing, we will do that sooner.
But we're going to put our budget notice mailing in the same envelope with our ballots.
Correct, but it's only here because that's the statutory deadline right now.
Understood, so we're, we're planning on pushing one envelope out.
When we talk about the budget notice mailing, that's that little white card, right? That nobody really ever knows how to interpret?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So, in addition, are we doing any less formal mailing?
Yes, so we'll have, we'll have a two-page flyer with the simple language from the proposition that is worked on by our attorneys that will go in the same envelope with the budget notice and a return postage stamped envelope.
Okay, perfect.
And then by 5 o'clock on June 9th, all ballots must be received by the district clerk, which is Barb, and then Barb will also have inspectors for the Board of Elections that are there to scan and count the ballots.
And I just wanted to point out, on June 9th, that is not that it needs to be mailed by that time, she has to physically have it in her possession.
Are people allowed to hand-deliver those, or do they have to be sent by US mail?
That's a good question, I haven't seen anywhere where they can hand-deliver them, but everybody's getting a return postage thing to mail them, so it'd be just simple for them to put it in their own mailbox and put the flag up.
Okay.
We'll have more clarification, I think, after our meeting tomorrow.
Because there's a difference between received and postmarked, because.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, it definitely, I agree with Laura, it's not postmarked, it's received, they will be counted that night.
Right.
Wow, okay.
Sandy, question, and I guess maybe you can ask this tomorrow, so are they, so Barb, how many do we normally print on an average year?
For absentee ballots?
Absentee ballots, or just balances as a whole?
As a whole, I usually order about 1,000 to 1,200, depending on how everything was the year before and how contentious the vote might be.
Right.
We usually get about 700 people voting.
We've not had more than 1,200 voters since I've been here.
Right, so, so how many are we going to print for this one now, we got to print close to 10,000?
Yes.
8,600 about.
So, ask, ask the people you're on their conference call tomorrow with, how the printers are going to be able to pump out roughly five to six to seven fold of ballots statewide? Because here's, here's who's getting rich in this whole thing, the printers?
Yep.
And the postal.
Yes.
And my question is, is the printers going to be able to do this properly at that excessive volume with them possibly being, having COVID issues?
Well, and Don, there are great questions you ask, because even with Jen giving Senator Galvin's office a call, we have contracts now that we will have by the end of the week with these printers. So if they reverse order on this in a week or so, we may not be able to back out.
Yeah, so, there we go, money that basically just is going to nowhere for nothing. I'm all in favor of a vote, but for something that gets rubber stamped 99% of the time across the state, I just can't believe the governor isn't using his executive order just to, to pass it, move it along instead of wasting millions and tens of millions of dollars.
There was a, there was some conversation in lobbying in the last two months for that to occur by different associations that are associated with education, and that was not one that was entertained.
Do you, do you think it's possible that between now and whatever date that is, that if more people come forward with pointing out that issue, that he could exercise an executive order and change it?
We may still have contracts that we can't back away from, but I would say yes, he always has the right to change an executive order. Up until yesterday, there were no presidential primaries for June 23rd, and as of today, there are.
So, I just got a text from Mitch Martin saying he's still waiting for state ed to respond.
So, we may end up with a lot of good envelopes.
Wow.
I'd have to order envelopes for many, many years, if that were to happen.
No, if that's the worst thing, then who cares, but.
True.
I mean, it just. I don't know.
And we're not a very big district.
No, I'm just thinking. No, I'm just thinking of a district like Williamsville, like.
Yeah.
They're huge. West Seneca, another huge one, like those districts are going to be.
Yeah.
So so Laura, can you run the process if this budget gets voted down? What's the process on the backside of June 9th?
I don't have a process yet. I was in a webinar today that has not been set up yet.
So what Laura's stating is there is no revote date that we've been given.
So what would be the, what would be the contingency budget if we had to fall back?
Last year's budget, right?
No, I don't think it's always that.
A contingency budget means that you can spend more than you did in the prior year as far as the tax cap levy goes. So I have not completed working on that yet because there's, things are coming down and I'm trying to keep up and trying to keep the numbers where they should be. I have not yet done that calculation. That's for tomorrow.
So roughly, we'd roll back around 300K, the budget would be then?
At least. It would be all of our equipment would come out.
Okay.
So there, there's a possibility that there could be a revote date. Part of me would suggest that it could be in June, but we're not convinced that that's the case either.
That would be a whole nother mailing then.
Possibly, unless, unless the ruling changes for the second one, which it could. It also does not allow us to purchase for next school year until you have
a pass.
Your second vote or an approved budget.
So Laura, when you say all the equipment comes out, you mean, does that mean buses or is that on a separate prop then?
Buses and computers are on separate propositions. If those pass, we can still go forward with those purchases.
So basically, if it got, if my, if my understanding is right, we wouldn't have to buy the new radios then?
Well, then we would have no radios because I'm being told that the FCC is shutting off the frequency, the ones we have work on.
Yeah, we can make that still stay live, I guess. All right.
Maybe they'll forget.
If then, if we go to a contingency budget, I will be coming back to the Board of Ed with a new presentation. And that presentation will give you the dollars and how, in discussions that I will have with the Audit Finance Committee members, where the board wishes me to move forward. We're only looking for an addition of $297,000 from the taxpayers.
Other questions from the board?
No.
Okay. Lucinda, anything else from you? I'm sorry, Laura?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, that it? So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Well.
We gotta approve the budget first.
Oh, sorry. I'm getting all out of myself. I just want, I want it redone.
Hang on, so let's do this. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2020, 2021 school budget and the amount of $32,364,315 be approved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried? Now I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, you can do that.
I just did.
Okay.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Bye. Good night.
Good night.